Right, good. I think, good afternoon, board members, staff, cabinet. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call. Han Lin, I'm here. Vice President Chris Norwood. Board Clerk Kelly Gipchuan.
Here.
Board Member Michael Sei.
Here.
Board Member Min Noh.
Here.
Student Rep Kush Brahm Hack. And Timothy Griggs. Please let the record show that these two student reps are not here for this meeting. Moving on to item three. Do I have a motion to review and approve the open session agenda?
Move to approve.
Review the open session agenda.
So second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You opposed? Okay. Agendas approved. Les, Vice President Norwood, would you help us lead us in the flag salute?
Ready. Begin our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Please be seated. All right. Our MUSD 2018-2021 strategic goals. Build a culture of wait that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting students' success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers. Focus services and support system to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and/or making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments. Comments from the public. Members of the public may address the board on any item, any subject not on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A.3 preclude any action. As a non-agenda item, no responses required from the board or district staff, and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct the superintendent to agenda as the item for a future meeting. If you would like to address the board on any item on the agenda or one that does not appear on the agenda, please log on to musd.org, fill out a request form, email it back to Scott. On your request form, please list your name, organization, telephone number, email, home address, the agenda item you would like to speak to. For items not on the agenda, Scott will read your comment or your request under the comments from the public portion of the agenda. And for items on the agenda, Scott will read your request or comments at the time of that item. The district asked for all the contact information from those who's wishing to speak so staff can follow up on issues brought to our attention. So thank you for your participation in the civic engagement. Board group agreement. It is for the board's ready reference, and it's got, we'll post that on the screen to, so that the community can follow. And I'm going to move on to item eight. Report Superintendent Jordan on COVID-19 budget impact and opportunities.
Scott, would you give me screen sharing, please? You need to stop sharing. There you go. Okay, can everybody see COVID-19 impact budget and possibilities?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for this special board meeting. I wanted to have, is there a way that I can get this off? Does everybody see that stop share that I see?
I don't see it.
Okay. Good. All right. Okay. So I wanted to bring us all together to give an update on COVID-19, its preparation, learning, and impact. I'd like to remind everybody that on Friday, March 13th, we held an emergency board meeting to respond to the emerging crisis of COVID-19. And when we reported that Friday evening, we talked about the pandemic planning that we had been doing in the few weeks prior to that date. And that evening, we announced that we would be moving to MUSD Educate Everywhere as the county public health office had implemented shelter in place. And our plans were made possible for us to launch distance learning, even though we essentially only had the equivalent of a parachute and also the collaboration of each other. And in just three days, we were able to launch our MUSD Educate Everywhere. And I have some data on hours spent by our team members. The three days, as I mentioned, were about 3,700 hours worth of preparation by all of our team members before launching on March 16th. And we had, since then, we had over 10,000 hours that our team members have invested in learning because they need to constantly update what they're doing so that they can provide the best learning and working situations. They've spent over 9,000 hours in collaboration time with each other virtually, and almost 18,000 hours of contact time, either one-on-one with students or in small groups with students. We knew back on March, back that week of March when we first launched, that Governor Newsom would continue our funding without penalty, meaning that he would continue it at the rate that it was for ADA up until the end of February without penalty for student attendance these last few months of school. However, there were three requirements that we needed to meet. And you can see what those requirements are here. Essentially, continuing the learning, making sure that students had nutrition, where possible, providing childcare for essential workers, and also continuing to pay our employees. And we did that somewhat successfully. And we're going to share with you how we did that and how we are moving forward as we try to continue to meet our strategic goals around improving communication, continuing to develop educational pathways, providing services for our students that can make social, emotional, and academic gains, and also identifying creative ways and focused strategies to enhance the healthy distance learning environment. So I have my team, our team, with us today to share with you the different aspects of how we worked to fulfill Governor Newsom's requirements. First, I'd like to present Director Chin Song of Technology Services.
Very good evening, members of the board, members of the public. Just a picture to start off. This particular piece is my little son Xavier kind of carrying a box, and then that's me in the background with a ladder and a tower, network manager, going and kind of getting one of our families connected way out there in the boonies. Right there out in the ranch, so I thought this is a poignant picture to the extent that we were going to help our families connect. Next slide, please. And so the staff hours that we spent approximately from March 13th through April 10th is about 960 hours. And then the cost is about $29,000 in terms of staff time during, during the launch. And then the technology costs, hardware and software wise, because we were able to use a lot of our existing equipment to get people connected, and we were prepared for some emergency scenarios, the cost was less than $1,350. However, our summer and fall costs, in order for us to get, to implement remote learning in full, would require approximately $4.75 million. And that's including full stock of Chromebooks that can potential, that can write on the screen as well as enhancing security, as well as the teacher technology for them to teach remotely, and then getting some assessment tools, communication tools, in addition to what we already have to enhance what they already do. And if we want to have both asynchronous and asynchronous environment, we'll need to invest about $3 million in our classrooms to do that. Next.
Could you briefly, could you briefly talk, mention to explain to me what the difference synchronous and asynchronous learning is?
So could we wait until the next slide, Chris?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. So this particular slide kind of lets you know the timeline between early March and then till today. The dip that you see in the middle is during spring break. But however you see, the usage rate never went to zero. As a matter of fact, most of our Gmail Drive packages stayed at around 6, 6,000 to 8,000 usage. Right, which means, which means 80% of our users were still on. However, I want to, I want to take you all the way back left. Where it says March 10th, and you see that significant spike in Google Calendar usage. So as soon as we knew, right on March 10th, that's when we began to ramp up and get ready in full to launch Educate Everywhere. In tech, if you notice on top for the Gmail Drive and for Google Classroom, you see more of a gradual rise. And that just indicates that our, most of our system was already doing some form of blended or digital learning, and they were already communicating to most of their students via electronic means. Next slide, please. Or actually, if you can go back, I just want to highlight some numbers. On the bottom for the, for the month, right, you see 8.6 million total emails, and then 1.4 million additional files that were added. And in total, our system had had 134,049 video hangout sessions. And that's Google Meet, not, not counting any of the other video methods that people might have used. Next, please. And so in terms of the technology connections, the impact is obvious, right? So digitally, there, if there was no tech, there wouldn't be Educate Everywhere in the current state that we have it. Perhaps we have Educate Everywhere with packets, but not certainly with video and the other, other digital methods. We had a relative smooth transition. And then 100% of the devices that were requested were fulfilled, both on the students' and staff side. We have near 100% on internet access, as well as 99.5% on contactable families. And we continue, and our staff continue to provide 100% online and offline support through the district office services, as well as answering phones remotely. So some of the possibilities going forward is adding better Chromebooks where students can digitize their work much easier than trying to write with a blunt instrument. And then also getting some improved tools of streaming capture live lessons, as well as getting better remote assessment tools and support and security that goes along with it, as well as trying to hit 100% on all metrics. And then to, to emphasize the importance of synchronous and asynchronous learning. So synchronous learning is when people are learning together. So for example, right now, we are very much synchronous. What we're doing on this webinar, we can take feedback and things are live, right? So you saw Chris asked a question, what's the difference between synchronous and asynchronous? So I'm able to in real time answer that question and then be able to record that in some meaningful way. However, the asynchronous manner is when the time is different and students, teachers, parents, staff members can go back at a different point in time in the future to go back and relive whatever experiences that they, they've had. So synchronous is together in real time, asynchronous is distant somewhere in the future, could be 10 minutes later, could be several days later. So I think there's some powerful advantages in going with both, both systems.
Thank you very much, Chin. Next, I'd like to ask Brian to share what the MOT staff has done in response to COVID.
Thanks, Cheryl. Good evening, members of the board and the public as well. It's been quite a journey thus far for us. As what Chin alluded to, prior to the March 16th, start of Educate Everywhere, our maintenance department was in the process of a, a complete deep cleaning in regards to our schools that started probably about 10 days before that. We had gone to minimum days so that we can incorporate, continue school, and at the same time, get the time we needed to actually perform that cleaning. We were very successful up to the point of school closure, and then we finished out that process several days into after school had officially gone to Educate Everywhere. Cheryl, next slide. So when you look at some of these numbers here, I like to break them down for you. With staff hours that were the total of 2121, staff time through variations for our hourly rates equates to about $72,000. Material costs that we have, they're really equate to some of the additional personal protective equipment, the PPE mask and gloves and so on that we had to acquire that were additional for our custodial staff, backpack sprayers, disinfecting machines that we utilized and brought on board to do these things. And in relation, as we look into summer and fall costs, you know, we really don't know exactly what we're going to need in terms of dollars because it's contingent on that model of education that we adopt. And with the uncertainty of that, it's really hard to place a solid finger on it with a dollar amount. But in any case, it will be great. With supplies and possible support. Cheryl, next slide.
Hey, Brian, I remember that you were going to get another one of those machines because we only had one or two of them for the campuses, and we were going to get more of those machines.
We did get one, Chris, and we had just received that about two weeks ago.
Okay, so how many do we have now?
That type of machine, we have two. So the impact we've had in relationship to these hours that I shared with you earlier, through meal distribution, I mean, the deep disinfecting equated to about 578 hours total in relation to that total number. And that was strictly for the deep disinfecting and cleaning initially. About $18,000 of that total dollar value. Then we looked at few distribution and support with custodial staff and the meal distribution that student nutrition has, has started and has continued. To date, we've got about 715 hours in relationship to support with them. And, and I'd like to, to emphasize and for you to think about that 715 hours so far for four sites that were distributing meals. Just imagine that that could grow exponentially if we were to do that at 14 sites. And we don't know yet, but the number could grow exponentially in that realm. In supporting class, in, in supporting Chromebook distribution and, and classrooms with student materials for collection and drop off. Those things come into play in regards to our custodial staff and site support. There's a total of about 828 hours that we have assembled in, in anything from the playground closures, the basketball court postings and closures that we needed to do based on the executive order. We started with, with signs, we started with caution tape. And then we had to go back because, because individuals didn't want to heed to the signs that we put up and had to put netting across our basketball hoops to prevent the enticement from people wanting to continue. So that took time. And yesterday, they did the Mel Peterside cap and gown distribution that our custodial staff helped support. We continue to support our HVAC systems and our distribution of meals, the refrigeration and the milk coolers that are used during, during the site meal distribution at the kitchens, we continue to monitor, maintain, repair, and such. You know, our possibilities, we, we continue to meet virtually. I collaborate with colleagues throughout Santa Clara County with thought exchange. More, more minds are better with bouncing things off each other, and it truly makes a difference and gives you new insight and ideas as we, we go through what no one of us have ever gone through before. We're continually looking for the grants and relief funds. An example of that are Wi-Fi hotspots for internet access. We've purchased and, and have applied for the grant through the California Teleconnect Fund. Last Saturday was our, our point of help with the first distribution for Second Harvest Food Bank in the city of Mel Peters. That'll be ongoing through August, that will continue to support.
Thank you, Brian. Next, I would like to ask Sandy Nguyen, our Director of Student Nutrition and Services, to share with us the undertaking that her team has done in feeding our community.
Good afternoon, board members and everyone. This is Sandy from Nutrition Services. Our food service has not slowed down at all. And as a matter of fact, it has, we've been working in a very fast-paced environment in the past nine weeks. We have been and continue to provide free meals, making that available not just to MUSD students, but also to all Trojan and the community to support their distance learning. Our operation has completely changed due to non-congregate feeding, which has changed what we serve and how we serve it. And our operation continues to be adjusted according to local ordinance and CDE guidelines. Next slide, please. So since March 16th, we spent over 4,200 labor hours on coordinating, producing, and distributing meals to families. We've had to adjust our operation very quickly, quite a few times, to determine what is adequate to keep up with our production while minimizing the exposure for our staff. 34 hours came from SNS staff and 768 came from staff of different departments who have graciously offered the help at the distribution sites twice a week. All of that staff calls came to about 115,000 from SNS hours. The material costs of $10,450 were money spent on bringing items specifically because of COVID-19. We brought in brown bags to individually bag our meals initially. The additional material that we now have to package 100% of our meal components and the, and, and the funds that we have to bring in for sanitizers and gloves for food service. We are planning to continue our current meal distribution throughout summer, which will cost about $234,000. Currently, we are figuring out what a meal service will look like. But like MOT, the cost is going to be contingent on what the model will be adopted and what is permissible by CDE. Again, the current meal operation is not normal for us. We don't know whether CDE will extend this waiver through next school year. But what we do know is that food and supply costs will increase next fiscal year. The food chain supply has been disrupted because of COVID-19. We are already expecting a 16% increase in milk for next fiscal year. So since we started distance learning, our warehouse remains open unlimited hours. We continue to receive essential supplies and quickly getting them out to sites. We have transitioned our operation from serving meals to students at a school level to serving all Trojan at a much larger and community level. So what we have seen is that families are losing their job, they are losing income. So our meal program is helping families stretch their food budget. So within the mere nine weeks, we serve over 175,000 student meals. So in the midst of this crisis, we have looked for grants and relief funding opportunities. So we have, Student Nutrition Services have applied for a total of $440,000 specifically to support child nutrition program. We've expanded our service to families, adding weekend meals for students and offering free adult meals. And during this time, collaboration and partnerships are very important. We keep a very close communication with CDE, with our local partners and other child nutrition department of various school districts to share protocols and solutions to common challenges that we are all facing right now. So all of this have really allowed us to stay on top of our game. So lastly, what I want to share is Student Nutrition Services is very much like a restaurant and other food service entity. We are struggling financially. As you know, most of our revenue is largely from federal reimbursements, from, from meals that we serve to students. And we are experiencing significant revenue loss during this time. We've projected to be in a $600,000 deficit due to revenue, revenue loss from student lunches. After-school program nutrition, there's no programs now. We're losing on bended supper meals and snacks. The food sales that we would do at 14 sites, as well as catering that we would normally do during the school year. So if the relief fund does not kick in, we will be depleting our SNS reserve of $280,000 and will also require a general fund contribution.
Thank you very much, Sandy. And I would like to point out before we move on, since Brian and Sandy support a great number of our classified team members, that this is Classified Employee Association Appreciation Week. And we greatly appreciate the work of both tech, of all of the team members for helping us to make it through the initial stages of COVID-19. Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Norma Rodriguez and her team. They're going to share with us about Educate Everywhere.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan, and good evening, board members and community members. So on March 13th, at exactly 2:00, our superintendent went on a Google Meet to notify all of MUSD that our schools were going to be closed. The same day, at 6:00, we were presenting to the emergency board meeting our plans. March, Friday the 13th, will never be forgotten. On that day, on, on that weekend, we worked a lot of hours to prepare ourselves. And on Monday, March 16th, our charge was very clear. With the governor's executive order, our schools were being closed, but the learning continued thanks to the concerted effort of all of our team members who had inputted about 19,000 hours of work for preparations, staying connected, acquiring materials, and additionally, right now, more recently, rethinking our summer program and start thinking about the needs for fall learning. Next.
Thanks, Norma. Good evening, board, good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Barnes, and I have the privilege of being the Director of Learning and Development here with Mel Peters. Norma's absolutely right, as we went into the first couple of weeks of moving from a physical to a virtual platform, one of the guiding questions we had to ask ourselves is how can we continue to provide academic and social, emotional supports for all of our students? So what you see here on this chart in front of you, that first row represents within the different worlds of LND, curriculum instruction and assessment. Middle column there is student services, and finally, ending with our Middle column there is student services and finally ending with our students with disabilities. We asked ourselves, how can we move from a physical to a virtual environment? You can see a lot of the different bullet points in that chart there. Just to pick a few, obviously, we're continuing our academic instruction virtually. We're increasing the number of touchpoints we have with our sites and our counselors. On the student services side, it's continuing all of the social emotional connections with students through 504 meetings or coordinating social emotional learning supports for our sites as they connect with those students. And of course, with our students with disabilities, it's meeting all the different needs through weekly IEP meetings virtually and or with our sped staff members to ensure that they're doing all they can to reach out to our particular families. As we continue to move into shelter in place, we realized that this was going to be a longer journey than we had initially thought. So then the guiding question for us is how do we adapt what we normally do, knowing that we may not come back and indeed not coming back? So that second row that you see there are some of the conversations we've had as a result of that. Moving to a credit, no credit, grade-based decision-making model, postponing health and sexual education until the fall of 2020, working virtually with teletherapy for our students with disabilities, making sure we can push all of these individualized services out virtually as much as we possibly can to meet all of the unique social, emotional and academic needs for the rest of the school year.
Thank you, Greg.
If I can add, I wanted to touch on that last, the first column. And good evening, board, and good evening, community members. Since shelter in place, we, as Norma has said, academic learning continues. And so part of what we've been doing on our end is helping the sites monitor student learning and engagement. Just using the iReady data, there has been students in K to eight have had an average of seventy-nine point one minutes on iReady ELA. So student engagement with regard to ELA content continues. And there's a sixty-eight point six average minutes of spent on iReady math lesson from student kindergarten to eighth. And the same token, knowing that shelter in place has had a huge impact on our students and especially our most vulnerable students. Planning for summer school, summer bridge, had to be intentional and deliberate this year, much more so than ever. So we paid attention to our historically undisturbed student populations, student groups, such as our homeless and foster youth, Title I students and English learners. So out of the, from the high school registration, there's over a thousand, no, there's about a five hundred and fifty students who registered. Of the five hundred and fifty registered, four hundred and sixty high school students are identified as either homeless, foster youth, Title I, special ed or EL. At the middle school level, all the way to elementary, we've been very intentional about prioritizing students to invite to these extended learning, to give them a little more time to master content, master standards due to the disruption of the student learning.
Thank you, Raquel.
And so we paused and we and we said, we have, we never let a crisis go to waste. And what that means is basically that as we entered the tenth week of this crisis, we explore all of the possibilities that there are. We see the need to plan for a seamless transition from learning at home virtually and at school via hybrid model to maximize the learning of all of our learners, while we need to support the social emotional wellness of all. Our teachers, our teachers have identified that during this time, they have had the opportunity to do home visits. Visiting and seeing our learners in their own environment has been very insightful for them as well as partnering with the families in a different way. We also have identified the need for the social emotional, not only for our students, but also for our parents and our teachers, as it has been a trauma. This change has impacted all of us. Technology will be continued to use for the self-directed learning, and it is enhancing the learning and maximizing our ways of continuing the learning for all. Learning gives us hope, it is therapeutic, and it is empowering, and it is shared by all. Next.
So if you can go to the next slide, Cheryl.
The, this one about authentic parent engagement and teacher collaboration.
Then after that one, I'll come back. Yeah, I'll, it's gonna, I'll touch on that. So at this time, we are, we're in our eighth week of sheltering in place. Our parents and our educators, the community, as we continue in the shelter in place, we are, we're getting worried. We're getting worried by the day. And I think part of, a lot of that has to do with what we have been accustomed to thinking about school and learning. I think part of our worries is we have associated learning with the physical structure of the school and the classrooms. And somewhere maybe, we have come to believe that learning cannot happen unless we are physically in a classroom. So we're in a situation where we're having to, we're forced to rethink what education is and what learning should be. So when Norman asked me to reimagine and recreate this new learning opportunities for our students, I had to ask myself one thing, what was the purpose of physical? Not that there isn't a purpose, that's our second home. But using that challenge as an opportunity. So what are the opportunities? We have three important key factors in utilizing our current situation in the best interest of our students. The first one is our students. If you look at the chart here on the very left, you'll notice students underneath the student, we have learning outcomes, desired learning outcomes for our students. What is our hope for our students? We want them to become self-directed learners. And what that means is we want to give the leadership. We want our students to take leadership of their learning. And how is that done? Well, there's a lot of autonomy going on there, and I'll come back to that. I'll come back to that, the self-directed learning piece. But what's important, I think, right now, when we see it, I, part of the panic is we tend to associate some of the learning for these students with the brick and mortar. Again, the specific lessons that the teacher delivers. We're, we're in a society right now where knowledge is at the fingertips. And with the technology and the Chromebooks that's been distributed to our students, our students are at a good place to be able to learn through, what is that called, conceptual understanding, not, again, I'll come back to that when I talk about the teachers. So one of the biggest things that I feel that is important for our our students at this time to grasp, not so much the standards right now, it's about how do I learn? How do I learn given this situation? What kind of a learner am I? Those are the key things that student, that help develop a student confidence. They're going to endure some productive struggles through where they currently are. But out of that, those productive struggles comes confidence, which is what we're trying to build anyways. So even if the students are at home, these things can still continue. High-quality learning can continue. It's gonna take collaboration. And the partners, our partners, we need to partner with the teachers and our parents. And it's going to be a challenge, it's not going to be an easy. It's not going to be easy for any one of us, but it will be done together in learning how to unlearn some of the things that we've been so accustomed to and within the four walls of our classroom by providing the, our teachers with professional development through PLCs and through teacher webinars. Teacher webinars could be, what we're hoping to do is create a library and using C2C as a platform to develop a bank of webinars for our teachers to access at their disposal as they need. I lost my train of thought, but so PLCs for teachers.
What are we talking about right now? Help me, help me understand where we are.
Did I lose you? I'm so sorry. So we're looking at, the question is, in our current reality with this shelter in place and students having to be, having to learn virtually, we're looking at what can we, how can we use this current reality? That students cannot come into the classroom to be with their teacher and to learn. So what are the options? How are we gonna, what options do we have to maximize our students' learning? So what I said was to provide opportunities for students to become self-directed learning. And what that means is they don't need a teacher physically in front of them daily to get their knowledge, to build their knowledge and acquire the skills that they need. But they can do that virtually, but there's a whole lot that students can do on their own in terms of learning by finding finding answer to the questions, learning about the content through technology, through resources that are available online or even through hardcover books. Now, how can students get there? What kind of support will they need? They're going to need the support of their parents and their teachers. So because this is a, an unfamiliar situation for every single one of us, especially for our teachers, they're gonna need the PUD and their colleagues.
Thank you, Raquel. I'm gonna ask Parwinder now to talk about parents, since you brought up parents. Parwinder? I think you're on mute. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Right. So can you go to the next slide, Scott? Is it Scott has the slides?
I do.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And I'm so glad that we have the opportunity to really focus on our parents. So I really want to keep our focus on that. Raquel talked about teachers. And at the end, we, you know, with all the PDs and all the needs that the teachers need is we want innovative and inspiring and resilient teachers. Because teachers are the ones that are gonna have direct impact on the parents and students. And for the parents, we want authentic engagement. And I really took this opportunity for the past six weeks to really get to know what our parents' needs are by directly talking to them one-on-one in small group meetings at weekly. And they, there's two needs that parents have that is, is to, they want to strengthen partnership with us. You know, we have a group of parents that we know, well, go out there, eighty percent, ninety percent of the parents will be able to support their students. But those, also those parents will need still how to navigate technology. You know, we can send them video, different ways. Create a network for parents. But then we also have this group of parents that we want to create advocacy for, that we want to highlight what, what we should provide them. And those are the parents I think we need to really strengthen our partnership with. Meaning we need to not ask them, what they are saying from my conversations. We just had one meeting that ended today at four thirty. What they're saying is, we want to help you. And but we are sometimes hesitant to say to our teachers, to our principals, to district teams, we need this. We don't know how to open up a parent's square. We don't know how to have our child stay on, on their schedule. So offer us opportunities where we can just tune in. And, and I think that is what we are really, from district perspective, our lead is going to be, is provide parents multiple opportunities to learn, to become learners, and also strengthen our teachers to, to provide those learnings for their, for their direct parents that they're serving. Another opportunity that the parent, it was parents' idea that when we open up the school year, don't start with the students, start with us. You know, give us a day or two of where you are, you know, the teachers are reaching out to first and sharing what their expectations are for distance learning, if that's the model. We know all hundred percent model we go to, and what would the end goal be? So we, as parents, know this is the end goal. And that we, that your expectations are very clear with us. And then what supports can you provide? You know, if we don't have, we don't know how to navigate technology, what are we gonna do? If we don't, and so right now, we have a good chunk of networking going for Spanish-speaking families. And I have a group, a group of advocates who will go out of their way, no matter what, will make sure that they are, we're reaching out to the families. What I really need support with is the Vietnamese group of advocacy out there. We don't have a community liaisons directly or TOSSAs. So that's my goal for this week. And really, I think, creating, that is the way to go. Because I really want to highlight that just this COVID-9, this opportunity, what he has done for me personally. I thought I knew my parent, I mean, I thought I was really good advocate for parents. But what he's taught me is that, no, that's not true, you know? It has, it has opened my eyes even to more and how we need to continue to really have authentic relationships where they feel comfortable. They don't feel judged. And we have to have, we're multiple ways to communicate with them. You know, it's not, it's not just technology. Sometimes technology is not doing it for our parents that need it the most, most support.
Thank you, Parwinder. And Norma?
Thank you. They said it. Our team has been working and looking at the different facets in terms of supporting all of our learners. And like I said, all of our learners not only include our students, but it includes our parents and it includes our teachers in terms of providing the way for us to come together and to learn from this current situation and elevate each other. The, the power is within us and the practice is within us. It's about us coming together and continue to elevate each other's practice and learn from one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jonathan and Damon from Human Resources.
Sure, I'm sorry, what happened to the side about the parent, authentic parent engagement? We, there were, there did someone, did someone talk about this or touch on this at all?
I believe that's Parwinder. I think that's what Parwinder was speaking to. When she talked about the meetings and what she's been talking about, and perhaps, Norma, you could add to it.
Sure, I can. We have been working in looking at the dashboard about parent engagement. What COVID has done for us is the authentic parent engagement, meaning that our teachers are seeing our parents as their allies. And our parents have really seemed as the teachers are walking, or not walking, but virtually entering their homes. The parents are at awe in terms of the dedication and commitment of our teachers, and they want to partner in a genuine way. And that is part of the work that we need to, it's an opportunity for us to continue to explore along the lines with the collaboration with our teachers.
Thank you. Thank you for helping me get through that. Appreciate.
Jonathan Brunson and Damon James, Assistant Superintendent Director of HR.
Good evening, trustees and our amazing staff that work here so diligently for Mel Peters Unified and our wonderful community of Mel Peters. HR, as you can see in this photo, is here to support our employees. No matter how big the challenge, we are gonna face it together. And we are very blessed to have an amazing group of people. So I'd like to introduce our Director, Damon James, to take you through some of the immediate impacts of COVID in HR.
Good evening. The Humans Relations Team strives to offer wraparound support for our Mel Peters community, captured in the image with the tree that we need to go back to. As of March 16th, our staff has offered approximately four hundred staff hours to COVID-19-related services and planning. This is roughly forty-one thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars in staff time. Next slide, please. We anticipate a significant increase in our spending for next year and the cost of substitutes. In providing a hybrid instructional model, we would need to have on hand at least thirty daily substitutes to support staff members unable to physically assist. to support staff members unable to physically assist students in class. Our regular budget accounts for about ten subs a day totaling two hundred and seventy hundred thousand. The new budget we need to account for eight hundred and ten hundred thousand dollars in substitute cost.
So as that leads us to how do we support our team members? You know, we needed to quickly look for solutions because of the impact for long-term certificated and classified employees that were not able to work for various reasons. And these are in no particular order, but we also saw that the, that the mental health of our students and our staff is something that we needed to focus on. And we were looking also at revamping our hiring process so we can do it completely virtually and still offer the same amount of, um, support and care as we welcome people into our district. And then establish our protocols and our HR-related functions, uh, because everybody's working from home now. But we want it to seem seamless for our employees that need our supports. So what are the possibilities? Well, the possibilities is that we were able to develop an EAP program, which stands for Establish, Employee Assistance Program. And we were able to do one ourselves where we reached out to a firm called Care Salise and they were able to provide at, um, an immediate assistance for our employees by calling an eight-hundred number. And they will, uh, do all the work for you to find the supports you need through your insurance, even if you don't have insurance. And then working through our schools, Santa Clara County Schools Insurance Group, we were able to, uh, put together a county-wide program for all members that would give them the services they need through what's called Optum Health. Optum Health, one eight-hundred number, you will get a counselor right away to support you. And then, uh, we, uh, look at developing our meetings so that when we meet with our county brothers and sisters in HR, that we can share best practices in order to support our employees around the district. And then we work very much with, uh, we have great positive relationships with our Teachers Association and Diana Orlando, as well as our, um, classified employees who are celebrating this week, uh, with Michelle Kessinger and her team. And in those meetings, we want to hear what their supports and needs are and how can we work together with management and our employees to ensure the safety of our employees is the first thing that we consider in doing their important tasks. And then, um, we put together an online platform, uh, so that we can now do all of our work and have a workflow system that is seamless between our departments and our schools. And we're excited to be getting that launched right now. And because of COVID nineteen, um, we are digging deeper into this so that we can ensure that this is something that will go on for years to come. And I want to thank our tech department, our county, and my HR team for all the work they've done to do this, to support our employees. And then, you know, we're always looking at leaves. For various reasons, employees need to, to be away from work and during COVID nineteen, we want to ensure that, that we protect them and, and, and there's, and support them. And then last but not least, uh, because of all of the, the requirements that have come to a halt at our universities and credentialing, we're finding ways to be more flexible that we can get the people in here, uh, to do the great work of educating our students. So thank you Superintendent Jordan and trustees for your trust and care and all the work that you've done to support us. And, uh, we will work together to make, um, HR and the rest of our team feel, um, like their services will always be second to none.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zing and Director Lin Lei to talk about the budgeting.
Hey, thank you, Cheryl, and good evening, board and the community members. And you noticed we have purposely put a picture of a money tray here. In order for us to grow our money, it takes a collaborative effort from all different departments, all different leadership levels. And now I'll turn it over to our Director of Business Services, Lin Lei, and to go over the, the operations during the COVID nineteen, the impact to business services. As you know, each year, our office processes over a hundred fifty million dollars of transactions. And that is, uh, that has a great impact to our district's operation and even our personnel.
Okay, Lin.
All right. Good evening, board members and, uh, community. In the past eight weeks, we also do our own research into all the new regulation. We reach out to our peers in other entity to share best practice and to share ideas. So not only our district, but everyone can get through this pandemic together. And of course, we spend approximately five hundred fifteen staff hour doing a lot, uh, all of that. And the cost here approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars. The eight thousand dollar in, uh, personal protective equipment and cleaning supply is the first wave that we bought. Now for planning for our summer school and the returning of our student, we plan to spend another three point three million dollar in more equipment, disinfecting. And of course, the biggest, uh, item is the desk divider and table dividers for not only our student, but for our staff. So make sure that they are safe. Next slide, please. Okay, so, uh, in business services, we are provide support to all our other departments. We take in the input, we try to find the best price for any equipment they would like to have. And our purchasing manager make sure that we get, uh, we can piggyback with other contracts to get the best price. Here in payroll and accounting, we still continue to pay our vendor. And of course, we assure our employees that we still pay them every month. So that way they can focus on, uh, the student and make sure that their families are safe. The possibility for us is that we are here to provide support to all other departments. And in that addition to all of that, we also here to provide a live voice for, to answer question from our community, uh, members and make sure that, uh, they get some sort of normalcy within our department to ensure that we are still here and we are here to provide all the support they need. Thank you.
Okay, next slide, please, Cheryl. Okay. Here are some major grants and the donations we either we have already applied or, uh, going or received or going to receive. Yeah, I won't go through each of the grants here and, but just some, uh, highlights. For a total of almost one point three million, that's, this is our, the total so far we have accounted for. And some of the grant, for example, the SB one-one-seven, the Senate bill, the one-one-seven grant, that was the first one relieved by the state to help us, um, to cover the cost under shelter in place, especially on meal services. Because we have to continue to serve our students and the community with some meals. And eighty percent of this funding actually has already spent. The KLA Foundation donation a hundred thousand, we just received that the, uh, last week. And this will help us to support in our distance learning equipment and on technology side. And you, you notice here, we listed a smaller grant. Normally I don't put the twenty-one thousand because it's such a small dollar amount. We try to list the major grants and the donations here for just, uh, for the reference. The Silicon Valley Foundation granted twenty-one thousand three hundred ninety-seven. It's a small, but it took, it took a lot of a staff's effort. First, we'll have to write, um, narratives, the program on narratives on distance learning and, uh, uh, parents' engagement. And so I appreciate that Norma Rodriguez from our Assistant Superintendent from Learning and Development, and that she spent the time to write that narrative. And so the business services, we can put the application together. After we submit the application and then the grant, um, writer also would like to conduct an interview meeting with me to go over our application before they can decide if they're going to fund us or not. So I have a good news to share today. This morning I got an email from the office, the grant office, that they approved our application. So we're actually going to receive twenty-one thousand. And as Cheryl pointed earlier to us that, uh, this grant actually is an ongoing rolling grant. So, uh, as if there are money available there and, uh, we will continue to apply. So we, we might continue to receive funding. And some other funding we listed here, right now they're pending. And the one, the Federal Care, Care Act, E S S E R, for the Emergency Relief Fund, six hundred forty thousand, that is committed by Governor Newsom in his main revision. So we will anticipate to receive this money probably in, in the end of the, I mean, calendar year, maybe around the November, December time. So again, we're not going to, we're not going to stop here to apply any available funds available. I mean, and if we know there is a grant out there and we will definitely to apply. And because every money will count to help us. You have already heard the cost that from shared by the other departments. The actual cost is a much more than the one point three million that we applied. And there will probably will be more cost associated with that. And, but we believe everything we do to help to recover some of the cost under the COVID nineteen, that'll be better for us.
Okay, Cheryl. Thank you very much, team. Before I go on, are there any questions or comments?
I have a question, Superintendent. Um, all the numbers reported it, uh, for each department. Are these number, how, how should I ask this? So let's say if we are still on our regular schedule, uh, and we work eight hours a day. So these numbers reporting that we've been spending five hundred seventy-eight additional hours, is that on top of our regular, uh, time?
Yes, when you look at the time that's been diverted towards, uh, the M U S D Educate Everywhere and COVID nineteen, what happens is that time that could have been spent towards some of the other strategies or some of the other duties or responsibilities or coaching, all, all of that time still needs to be made up in some way because we still, at the same time, everything hasn't stopped. We still have some of the ongoing regular processes for running the school district that have to take place. So if it weren't for COVID nineteen, those hours could be spent doing other things.
Right.
And, uh, as Norma mentioned, in every crisis, there are opportunities. So it's not to say that the time has not been spent well, because it certainly has. It's just to help you understand why we decided that we wanted to help the, um, board and the community to understand the work that's going on behind our M U S D Educate Everywhere and telecommunity.
I know. I, I'm not asking for any other reason than to feel and to appreciate and to, to tell myself, um, how lucky M U S D is to have all the support from the staff, the cabinet, yourself, um, and everyone, the teachers, uh, parents, the community. Very, very lucky because all the time that's put in, um, just to make sure that we stay strong together and that we will, um, we will win this COVID nineteen.
Thank you.
Could I, um, ask Wendy a question?
Sure.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, uh, is there a formula for the dollar amount, um, for SB one-one-seven for, um, in the amount of one seventy-six ninety-three and the Silicon Valley Foundation at twenty-one thousand three ninety-seven? Um, is that like based on number of students or how, how is that number calculated? Cause it's such an odd number.
Well, yeah, I mean, the SB one-one-seven is Senate Bill one-one-seven is from the state. Uh, I'm sure there, I think there is a formula and the formula is a base, is a dollar amount per ADA, average daily attendance. And the Silicon Valley Foundation, that smaller grant of twenty-one thousand and is a basic, uh, is actually they have a certain criteria and then they have a allocation of each school district and they allocate that amount to us for now.
I see. Thank you so much.
I would add that, uh, the Silicon Valley Foundation is also takes into account the percentage of free or reduced students.
I see. Thank you.
I have a comment. Uh, yes, I, I would just like to echo everything that President Han Liang said. I think we're, we're really blessed to have so, so much hardworking staff that's just stepping up and rising to the challenge. Um, and I think really compared, compared with, um, you know, no, no, not throwing shade at any other school districts, but compared with other Santa Clara County districts, I think we, we're really doing, um, better. Um, and, and it's just thank, thanks to so many staff members who have been stepping up. So I, again, I really echo, um, President Liang's comments.
Thank you.
Hey, team, um, a couple of things here. And I appreciate, uh, reviewing all this. What I've seen from the slides as far as the, the different dollar amounts, it seems to be a blend of, uh, static costs and ongoing costs. Uh, it'd be great to understand, you know, how much more of ongoing costs that we have, understanding that I, you know, on the screen right now, we have grants and donations to kind of help supplement some, some of the static one-time costs to kind of ramp up to address the issues. But I think my concern right now is, uh, what are you telling us as far as ongoing costs that we need to really prepare for as a community?
Two of the big ongoing cost, well, one large ongoing cost is the four point seventy-five million that Chin Song, uh, has projected for establishing the technology structures that will enable us to work in a hybrid or one hundred percent distance learning model. And, uh, then there is also the static cost that Norma identified of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand for professional development. And then another somewhat static cost that, uh, that Lin Lei has brought up, which is three point three million for just preparing for the distance learning physically. Are there any other questions before I move on?
Yeah, you know, uh, the interesting thing, and Parwinder talked about parent engagement and, and I, I appreciate everything that staff is doing because technology is the key here. However, she talked about technology being a challenge for some of the, the families who don't understand how to utilize that. So that's an undocumented cost in the sense of, you know, how do we as a school district help engage those parents even further? And, and that's staff time. That's not necessarily money as far as, uh, going out and, you know, purchasing additional, uh, training videos for them. It, it, it becomes more one-on-one from a teacher perspective or staff perspective to engage those parents, to, to ensure that they have the right skill sets to help their students in what we're calling self-directed learning, uh, in the future.
Uh, Scott, are there any public comments?
Yes, uh, we have some public comments. I was waiting for, uh, my queue. Actually, we, we have two. Um, and the first one is from Robert Jung of, uh, North Park Victoria Drive in Mel Peters. Um, and his comment is, congratulations on getting everyone connected to educate everywhere. M U S D was a standout in getting our kids prepared and continuing learning. In terms of cleaning, have we looked at UV machines to help with cleaning? Did you want me to go to the next comment or did you want?
Yeah, um, I can respond quickly to that. Uh, we have purchased the machines that Director Brian Shreve referenced that are approved and recommended by the C D E Centers for Disease Control, CDC. And, uh, that's the product that we'll be using. What is the next?
Okay, uh, there's another comment also from Robert Jung of North Park, Park Victoria Drive. In the area of educating students, what is the expectation of where students will be at the end of the school year? Will they be expected to be ready for the next grade level? Or will, or is, or will there be a need for additional support for students? What is the plan for the summer?
Our plan for the summer is called Summer Bridge and that's what Director Raquel Kasunoki was describing.
All right, and, uh, that. All right, and that is it for public comment.
So one comment for, for me to kind of close my portion now. I really appreciate kind of all hands on deck from all the departments here. Pivoting to really look at how we can grow our education path for our students in the future here and in the immediate time right now through this crisis. So really thank you all.
Welcome.
Thank you, Min.
President Liang, shall I go on?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I was waiting for you.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Um, there was a question that was brought up by Robert as it came to cleaning. That was under Brian's jurisdiction of MOT, correct?
Right.
Um, did he have, is Brian still with us?
Brian, are you with us still?
Yeah.
Um, if we can go back to Brian's slides quickly, because he talked about what the possibilities are. Yeah, that brings up the possibilities in terms of how how do you see cleaning? Or sanitizing? How do you see cleaning and sanitizing the district moving forward as terms of, as a possibility?
It's interesting that you, you bring that question up, Chris. We, I was just having an in-depth conversation about process, procedures, how we have been and how we'll look as we return to educating children when the time comes, however that is. When we return, because it's not going to be the same. And we're, we've, we've engaged in developing a plan that talks about what we'll do, how we'll do it. Process, procedure. Because there's so much more to it than what we have. And until we get through this, there'll be an, there'll likely be an increased presence of need for more, more disinfecting and cleaning than we have done in the past.
Right, Superintendent? Okay.
Okay, so I wanna. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of working, little audio troubles here. Just speaking to Brian, you know, Brian, we talked about teaching, we talked about students, we talked about parents. We talked about our infrastructure significantly. We talked about the food. But what you're dealing with in terms of how to keep the environment safe, because this, because that is a safety issue. If, if all the places aren't clean, it becomes a safety issue, it's a health risk. We have some older teachers. We have some folks with underlying health conditions that are all put at risk if these environments aren't prepared in a proper way, almost multiple times a day. So there's definitely a lot more to your work involved in terms of this whole process. And I'm hoping that the time is going to be spent to investigate and really look at what you have to do in detail as we have to make decisions moving into not only summer and fall. Because we, we do see things that are starting, we're starting to see less restrictions. So with less restrictions, parents are going to start to believe that, hey, schools can open back up. But, but there's a lot more to it. And I think, you know, the work that you're doing or you won't be able to do reasonably needs to be clearly laid out so that we have a better understanding of that in the future.
Absolutely, without a doubt. And we are in the process of that and discussing that and formalizing reasonable expectations of what we will be able to do. And if it needs more equipment, then that's what we'll have to look at to maximize the time that we spend and the process that we take place in addressing these needs. Because we're talking about many more things. And as you said, it's just not business as usual. And the possibility of cleaning things multiple times a day. And how we do that efficiently and quickly, because it will, it will play a big factor in how we're seeing and how we keep things safe for all levels from, from young to older generation.
Agreed. And, and could you speak a little bit to Robert's question specifically about the different strategies? Or the disinfective strategy, the UV versus what we're doing currently?
So the machines that Cheryl alluded to that we, we have purchased, that we use are electrostatic. And they spray a mist that is charged, that it actually clings to the actual surface at which it's sprayed on, so that it contacts it, not just on the top, but in and around surfaces. UV, UV disinfecting isn't necessarily old. I, I don't know a lot about it. It's interesting that it has come to the, to more of the forefront now since this has occurred. And I do know that there are, are thoughts around automation in some areas of, say, for example, grocery stores that will have machines that, that use ultraviolet light that are on machines that go up and down aisleways that are utilized. How we might do that with inside of our classrooms, I'm not 100% sure on. Nor am I familiar with the actual costs and if it's as cost-effective as what we currently utilize. What we currently utilize is very quick, very efficient. A classroom can go outside for a very short period of time, whether it be recess or to lunch or whatever may be the case. And within minutes, we can, we can actually miss the room and the classroom can return within 10 minutes.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak on this topic. Well, I, again, thank you, Chris Norwood. I think you raised some excellent points about the reopening. And I think this, this is definitely an area we should look into. I, I feel like our reopening strategy is, there's a good place to find synergy with our campus security strategy, especially the idea of a single entry and exit point for our campuses, because that way you're gating the foot traffic in and out. And that's also where you can apply sanitation practices to make sure people are safe. Like I've seen examples, we could maybe set up a checkpoint where, you know, students and teachers coming in. There's going to be like a garbage bin for them to dispose of their old face mask and pick up a new one as they check into the school. And maybe walk through a sanitizing device. It's like, it's almost like those metal detectors at the airport, but you walk through it and it sprays the sort of alcohol-based disinfecting mist that's not like toxic to the lungs or anything. And it's an extra layer of security. And I'm also optimistic about the use of autonomous devices. I know some, some governments have implemented a program where they have like autonomous, like little rover robots that are going to go around and spray mist. So if we could maybe employ some of these tools in our arsenal, we're going to be safer when we reopen.
Do you want to respond to that, Brian?
Um, we, we certainly can look into those things. Again, it's yet to be seen where we'll be and how we'll look, dependent upon the model we end up going with. But those are all things that will come into play as we try to be the best that we can to keep the environment which we work and also teach in, along with staff, students and parents, to be as safe and clean as we possibly can be.
Great, thank you, Brian.
Well, our team has shared with you the aspects of our progress in fully responding to the impact of COVID. And you heard from Brian about cleaning and disinfecting. And we've also talked about the cost of personal protective equipment of estimated at 3.3 million dollars. Chen has described the tech equipment and expertise that is needed, especially as we move towards more online education tools. And Sandy shared what her team has been doing to ensure that student nutrition continues in spite of a $600,000 deficit. And you've also heard from Norma and Jonathan from their teams about the social emotional learning as well as professional development and parent guardian support that is needed to ensure that our learners' needs are met and that we are continuing to forge educational pathways for them. And at the beginning of our presentation, I shared with you how with the few couple of weeks of planning that we had, we equipped ourselves with parachutes. And again, because we are stronger together, we worked together to be able to launch jumping out of that airplane. We have, we are driven, we have the know-how, we have the determination to build a jet plane that takes us where we want to go and MUSD Educate Everywhere. However, there's the reality. So let me go through the reality with you. What we do know, we know that the Public Health Department will require, as they do now, they will continue to require the disinfecting. We went through great lengths to discuss the costs of disinfecting. That's going to take quite a bit of person power. We've talked about face coverings. We know that every student and teacher and employee will need to wear face coverings. We're not quite sure about those who are under six years old. We're also not quite sure what happens to our employees and our students who have high-risk needs. How do we know for certain that we can protect them? How do we know with currently only 24 touchless thermometers for the district with more on the way, but backordered? How do we know that we'll be able to do the symptoms check? How are we going to be able to do that with students and employees coming onto campus without taking a large amount of time? How are we going to be able to make sure that there's six feet of distance between students as we're providing instruction in person? And if we have to do six feet of distance between students, how do we know that we even have the numbers of teachers available to make that happen? Do we even have the square footage to make that happen? And then there is the group number. Currently, we know that the Public Health Department and the state are allowing 1 to 10 ratio for childcare. And right now, the Public Health Department is only allowing that for childcare and not necessarily for education. So if that continues, because that's the worst, 10 to 1, how do we maintain that? We also know that in MUSD Educate Everywhere, 96% of our elementary students have been engaged. And 93% of our secondary students have been engaged. And we know that 221 elementary students on average each week are not engaged. We also know that 333 on average secondary students are not engaged. What are we going to do to reach out to that 555 unengaged number of students when we start next year if we are still in a 100% distance learning model? Where do we find the manpower for students to be engaged at that level of high touch? When our teachers, if they're doing hybrid models, will have to figure out how they provide instruction both in person and still online. They're going to need a lot more prep time than what they currently have. How are we going to be able to make sure all of our learners are engaged and our teachers are not burned out? Even more devastating is the economy. Our state economy, we know from the Financial Analyst Office of the State Finance Department, is projecting a $54 billion deficit just for this year. We also know from the Legislative Analyst Office that this recession will probably occur through 2023 and 2024, regardless of if it's an L shape or a U shape. LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula. This is something that the previous governor had worked hard to accomplish along with the current governor in ensuring that we reached pre-recession rates of school funding. We are now at that level. However, with this COVID-19 recession with close to 19% unemployed, we are looking at 10% cuts at least. Where we had in January, a COLA projected of 2.4%. That COLA is now projected at 0% at best and a negative percent at worst. We also know that Prop 98, that's the school funding that many people are familiar with. We know that we will expect to have a $13 to $18 billion cut to those funds. We also know in the governor's current proposal for his May revise that he has line itemed several categorical programs that we and Milpitas unified that our students benefit from. One is the Career Technical Education Funding. That helps to fund our Digital Business Academy, our E-Tech Academy, as well as some of our other career technical oriented processes for learning. We also know that he has line itemed Adult Ed. Adult Ed has already been struggling. Already for the last five years, Adult Ed has not received the funding that it used to. And now to experience further cuts? I don't know. And then there's the after-school education and safety funding. That provides support for families to be in programs such as the YMCA at a reduced cost because they are supported through this funding. That is scheduled for cuts. And the K-12 Strong Workforce Grant. That is something that we were looking at in order to provide something such as TechNest for high school students. Without that grant funding, the TechNest idea will probably not be something that comes to fruition. And finally, the thing that most amazes me, in addition to all these other cuts, is that when we recall that at the beginning of COVID-19, the governor laid out his four requirements that would hold schools harmless for this 2019-20 school year and keep us at the same funding rate. That was to, as much as practicable, provide childcare for essential workers. Did you know that our Child Development Center provides preschool for our most vulnerable population? We've seen over the last couple of years how our director, our coordinator, Dr. Lopez, has brought in funding in creative ways so that the Child Development Center is almost self-funded. Well, now we're looking at a 10% reduction. This is a devastating time with immense challenges ahead. And in some respect, it doesn't look hopeful.
I hear you, Superintendent. In short, is there a one number that speaks for all the departments?
One number of overall costs?
Yes.
Approximately 8 million.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And that's overall cost projected for continuing distance learning in the new school year.
Right. Yes. Okay. Scott, there is another couple of comments, right?
Yeah, we have one more public comment. Would you like me to go ahead and read it?
I'm okay with that. Are you done with your presentation, Superintendent?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Scott, why don't you read the comments?
Okay, this is from Jamie Schletzbaum of Milmon Drive in Milpitas, has a child at Milpitas High School. And the comment is, is the cost for substitute teachers assume that we will be doing distant learning? Or under the assumption that we will be returning to a classroom setting of some sort? What is the plan for substitute teachers for the 2020-2021 school year? Will we be needed?
Damon, Director Damon James, would you please respond to that?
I can, if you'd like.
Yes, Jamie, substitutes will be needed to the extent we're not sure at this point because we're still devising what instructional program will offer, whether are we a hybrid model or a distant learning model?
That was it for public comments right now.
All right, thank you, Scott. Are there any other comments or questions for Superintendent or staff?
Superintendent Jordan, I really appreciate this state of reality discussion here because we talked about how in regards to our distant learning, where we have to try a way to pivot as many businesses and many individuals and families and students have to figure out during this crisis. But there is a cost. And so I appreciate, you know, dispelling the notion that, hey, the students aren't showing up or the schools are closed and, you know, we shouldn't have any more costs associated with running a school, which is untrue from that standpoint. It is vitally important that everything that we're trying to do to ensure the safety of our student learners, of our teachers, of our classified staff, that does cost money. And with the economy the way it is, it's not hopeful from that standpoint. Now, I want to appreciate what the staff has done over the previous years in building up our reserves to help mitigate us through the current crisis. However, my question now is just, where do we go as a school district? You know, how do we plan for the state of the economy going forward as projected towards 2023 to 2024?
Superintendent?
Superintendent Jordan, to, I think I want to ask Min's, I want to complement Min's question in a slightly different way. How fluid are things still?
What do you mean by fluid?
You put together these numbers. Is there a possibility of these numbers increasing? Are these the projected numbers worst-case scenario? Because we've seen our costs, we are educating our community, we've been committed to that, and then we have these concerns. But as you know, one of the things that's been happening is that the economy has slowly been opening back up. So do we expect these numbers to, are these worst-case scenario numbers or these are the reality of right now?
These are worst-case scenario numbers for the projected deficit based on the Legislative Analyst Office. The $54 billion deficit is from the finance. The other potential cuts, those are worst case for what we know right now. And I know next week, next week, in the next week or the board meeting following that one, Wendy Zhang, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, will be providing a budget study session and she will have more details.
Yes. And one thing, can I just add one more thing just to also to answer Min's question? And the governor Newsom's May revision projection, this is kind of the worst-case scenario. And also, he mentioned it also depends on the federal government relief support. If federal government are going to provide the $1 trillion that the California, the state of California was asking, so that will help to lift the cut a little bit. But honestly, at this point, it's really difficult to estimate how much the state revenue lost because the Fed, if you recall, for personal income tax collection, that was extended to July. And we, at this time, the state, the Department of Finance, there's no way for them to project how much the personal income loss overall for the state of California. So this is the best information based on the current data available that they can project out. Honestly, it could be worse than this, or it could be maybe a little bit better because the data, the recent quarter from March to June has not really finished yet. So we really don't know.
I agree with you, Wendy, and I appreciate Superintendent put together all the numbers here, having all the staff. You know, you guys are real leaders. I just want to remind you guys that this is not Milpitas alone. The problem is just not for Milpitas. It is the world's problem right now. Every single school district has the same problem and has the same worry. So yes, we worry, but let's hope for a bright tomorrow that the Fed, the government's going to come out with some sort of grant or some sort of way to lift all of us school districts up and they are there for our students. So don't lose sleep over this.
Yeah, I, Han, I'm probably going to lose some sleep. We've, we've worked, you know, we've worked really hard in a number of different ways to make sure with Educate Everywhere, knowing the learning loss that would possibly happen to our students, knowing the disruption of education and the normalcy of our classifieds as well as our teachers and administrations. And we've invested in the learning and the opportunity of what the future of education could look like in complement to what we already know. I'm thankful to the superintendent and the cabinet and everyone that presented today this state of reality in terms of what we've spent, what we've invested, how we've invested it. The, from the majority of comments that I'm hearing, the community has been appreciative in comparison to our neighbors. Again, not like Michael said, not throwing shade on anybody else, but we've been doing Milpitas the way that we want to do it. And now, I guess I'm looking toward to the superintendent as far as what are potentially our next steps? So what is the cap? What could be the board's next steps and what could be, or what are going to be the cabinet and the superintendent's next steps?
I will take back my "don't lose sleep over this." What I meant, what I wanted to say was, I did say I appreciate this whole presentation, the reality of all the numbers. And I did say you guys are real leaders in our district. And we, I, I am very lucky to be a part of this team. And I also said, the problem is not Milpitas alone. We are, we have the same problem as other districts.
Yes, we do. And there are several next steps that have to be taken. There is the big one, which is budget. And I look to Wendy's upcoming reports about our budget and the three-year budget look based on using some of these 0% and possibly negative percent COLA and some of the other projected cuts. And as I've been talking with our leadership team, one thing about education that has been historically the reality, or I should say historically the perception, is that the state tells those of us school districts who are based on average daily attendance, they tell us how much they're going to fund us each year. They also tell us when they're going to take money away from us. And we respond by shrinking and growing. We grow when there's good years and then we shrink in numbers when there's bad years. And we're probably most likely going to have to do some more shrinking. But instead of saying shrinking, I'd like to say reorganizing. There is something different. And this is what you saw in the slide here. There is something different that we in MUSD are focusing, beginning to focus on, which is why Wendy talked about going after even the $21,000, even the $9,000. We have to also take into account that we can generate revenue. We can generate revenue through grants, donations, and also potentially through our Milpitas Alliance Partners for Future-Ready Learners. There is also the opportunity for us to do a capital campaign. Now, as we talked a month or so ago with the board when we were looking at the different building structures for the Innovation Learning Campus, we talked about a capital campaign for buildings. There's something called a coordinated campaign, which is both looking for funding for buildings as well as funding for programs. So that is something that we are in the midst of working on and preparing to launch. There's something called the silent stage, and that's where you come, well, I'll present more of that at a later date. But there are different phases for campaigns, and that's what we're getting ready to do. The other piece is what are some of the other revenue streams that districts can bring in? We know that there is the bonds, but again, bonds are only for buildings. So that's not really going to help us with programming too much. There's also parcel tax, P for programs. People run programs. That's a potential. What we need to do is think about how we build revenue. That's one step for the budget. Another step is to look at how we can reorganize, reorganize in such a way that we can build that jet plane. And then the other step, the very immediate step, is preparing for the opening of the new school year, whether it be 100% in-person, excuse me, 100% online or hybrid. And we are currently in the listening phase of getting stakeholder feedback and generating ideas from all stakeholders on what that might look like. These different aspects that we talked about tonight, that Brian specifically talked about, that we talked about with nutrition and we talked about with preparing ourselves for the next iteration of MUSD Educate Everywhere and providing professional development and providing teacher and parent support and all employee support, that is part of our planning for the new school year. So there's three steps. One is generating revenue. One is restructuring. And the other is preparing for our, most likely, a hybrid model of distance learning and in-person learning.
Thank you.
I have a few more public comments if you guys would like to hear them.
What do you mean, who would like to hear them?
I mean, at this time, I didn't know if the board had any other comments before I chimed in, but here I go. We have Charles Schletzbaum, also of Milmon Drive in Milpitas. He has an MHS senior, and his comment is, what process will be used to decide if, how to hold a graduation either end of summer or December like other schools? Would it be possible to have a spread-out, in-person student graduation with no in-person audience broadcast to the community?
Has that idea been brought to the committee, the graduation committee?
I know that I've heard that spoken about at the high school committee with, I think there's about 32 people that I saw on the stakeholders group. And that would be where that idea needs to be discussed further.
So may we direct Superintendent or to direct, to make sure that that is recorded and it gets to that committee for consideration?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, the next public comment, again, is from Robert Jung of North Park Victoria Drive in Milpitas. His question is, is there a target date as to when a decision has to be made in regard to the fall? I mean, it's the reopening of schools or?
That is fluid. Right now, we are planning on the calendar date that's already calendar.
Okay. Next comment from Michelle Kessinger of CSEA and lives on David Lane in Milpitas. Her comment is, what is our cash flow amount? Wouldn't going hybrid cost the district more money?
Yes, going hybrid will cost more money. And our cash flow amount is something that we don't, that we're watching very conservatively. And Wendy can add to that.
Yes, for this coming year, and we're going to use basically our reserves to cover for our operation. And in the meantime, we're also thinking to issue a short-term borrowing. And I'm working with our financial advisor now to forecast our cash flow based on the recent May revision that released by Governor Newsom. We're definitely watch closely our cash because each month we will need at least $10 million to run the operation. With the hybrid model, that would increase our cash assumptions each month.
Superintendent? I understand that you and Wendy have a handle on the projected potential cost of going hybrid. If we, if we didn't go hybrid or something like that, what are the alternatives or what are the risks? And because I'm thinking about health and safety, I'm thinking about our staff. We all want to be back in school right now. We all want to be back in school right now. And so, and I know that parents want it. I know teachers want to be back, but there's a reason why we're not and we're considering these ideas. So I'm not sure, is the answer to that question purely based on opportunity cost? Meaning, you know, because to do this model, we know we have to get more equipment relative to the risks of everyone else coming back?
So there are costs to both. There's cost to in-person 100% because we know we have to follow the Public Health Department guidelines. And that, that cost Wendy and our team has estimated about $3.3 million. There is a cost for distance learning because we certainly cannot continue with what we have right now. We need to do more. And there is the cost for hybrid, which is a combination of both the PPE as well as continued staff development and time for all of our employees to do what they're doing well. So in any case, there is cost.
Degrees. Challenging degrees. We do PPE, excuse me, we do distance. We have to ramp up things. We try to go back. We increase our health risks. We do in-between. We deal with both. Is that, is that, is that what I'm sort of hearing?
Yep, there's costs for everything. There's costs also, there's consideration. Even if there, there's even the consideration for mental health. So even in 100% distance learning, it is still not healthful, I should say. It's not, there's still health risk.
Health risk, okay.
I'd like to comment. I think Superintendent Jordan really touches on a great point about the mental health costs with distance learning. And I think that that's one of the hidden pains of this pandemic. As we know, like, mental health and mental illness can be kind of an invisible issue in our community. There's some stigma surrounding it. But, you know, I'll say that, you know, it's okay to talk about it and that we should be talking about mental health during this time. Because a lot of folks are developing cabin fever and, you know, dealing with all sorts of effects. Because just not being around people is a new state of being for a lot of people. And for our kids as well as students with special needs. Some of them are really just not adapting so well. So yeah, great, great point, Cheryl, that, you know, mental health is going to be one of the invisible issues of the pandemic, but something we can't afford to overlook.
You know, I want to talk about the kind of the reality. Even if we went back to 100% in-person, there are talks that in the winter, we could potentially go back into the shelter in place again because we just don't have a vaccination. So even projecting for 100% in-person, there's still this planning that needs to happen for the hybrid model. Because, you know, in the fact that we go back to shelter in place, you know, we have that ability to say, hey, we did it the first time. We have this second run of distant learning that we can continue to enhance. And so I think that planning for the hybrid really helps, you know, us to be better situated for both 100% in-person and distant learning.
And I would add to that, that COVID-19 is here for a while. It's not going to go away in the next year.
You could just add just a little bit more, just add a little bit more bad news to the, just a little bit more. Just a little bit more.
It's a reality check, Chris. It's not about being bad news. It's, you know, we're all being very hopeful here. But at the same time, we have to ensure that we're planning for all scenarios, right?
Yeah. All right. Anything else, Superintendent Jordan?
Unless there are no more questions or comments, I appreciate all the time that each team member has taken. And I appreciate every team member who's at home doing the work that they do. And I appreciate you board for your support. And there are, it is the reality. And we need to think about, need to think about our next steps and what comes in the next few weeks.
Yes.
With that said, I would ask that next week is our regular board meeting. I would ask for the board meeting after that or unless there's a drastic announcement by the governor that, and I guess that's three weeks from now. Will, is it possible that you'll have a greater framework in terms of based on a couple of different scenarios of what we may be doing for the fall? Because there's also this issue of, well, probably summer and fall because there's anxiety of folks that are dealing with it. So my ask would be that we have on the agenda this item as far as what our next steps are?
Yep, as a matter of fact, we're targeting June 9th for a draft report of next steps.
Thank you.
Is Norma, Robert is still on the call here?
Yes, she is.
Yes, I am.
Hey, Norma, what was the number of our average daily attendance in the district before shelter in place?
That is a very good question.
Well, I can't help you, you know, because since I do ADA, ADA projection is a part of the funding.
78%, 80%?
Well, our rate is this year before the COVID. I mean, is, because the ADA this year was taking actually prior to COVID-19. Our district is about 96.9% average. That's from K to 12. Normally, we could do better, like 97% or 97.5%. That could have been our best.
So what you're saying is before shelter in place, we're at 96.4% on average for the district. And yet with MUSD Educate Everywhere, we have 96% engaged of elementary school learners and 93% engaged for secondary learners. So we have a significant amount of engagement with distant learning. You know, again, I was talking about reality check. This is also a reality check, something to celebrate as far as a community that, you know, parents and students are being engaged with our education and our model. So really thank you, all to the staff and thank you community for, you know, putting your faith and trust in what we're trying to do and trying to accomplish during these pandemic times.
Well, Min, what I said, 96.9%, that was pre-COVID-19, so pre-shelter in place. And after we are in, we were in shelter in place, we're not requested to take attendance. But I'm sure we do have a way to track the engagement with the student.
It's actually there on the screen, Wendy, with the MUSD Educate Everywhere.
Yep.
Norma, could you briefly talk about how we track engagement?
Sure, and thank you. The way that our teachers are tracking engagement is basically they are making a point of contact and their students. That was the connection that we said it was very important to us to make sure that we were connected with our students. And so it's how the teachers are connecting. On Friday, the teachers enter in our area system. Instead of taking attendance on a daily basis, on Friday, the teachers go into our student information system and they entered a number to say the numbers of times that the students, that the teachers were in contact with the students. And that means the students are, like what Raquel was responding to, how many times the kids are connecting with the learning via the iReady, their Google Classroom, the students are working on their projects, the students, they're logging in when the teachers are going to engage synchronous and asynchronous way. That's how the teachers are reporting the level of engagement. One of the things that are happening now is as the teachers are working in collaborative, collaborative really, they are coming up with their own rubrics as to how do we define engagement? And what is a high level of engagement? And so it's engaging the teachers in a deeper conversation about how they are calibrated and the definition of engagement, true engagement. Thank you.
That's powerful, thank you. That's very powerful, thank you.
All right. I am sure this matter will be presented by Superintendent again and again until we have found a solution to resolve this. If we don't have any other comments or questions, I'll call this, yes?
Yeah, one more, one more comment.
All right.
Public, also from Michelle Kessinger of CSEA. And her comment is, 21,000 is a classified person's job, so every penny counts. That's her comment.
Thank you, Michelle. Yes, Norma?
Thank you. I'd just like to add the, with this experience that we're living, one of the things that I, we have noticed in speaking with teachers and speaking with parents, some students are thriving in this virtual environment. And they are, they're self-learners, self-starters. They are flourishing with it. The students that we have noticed that are not necessarily flourishing through this mode of learning are our students who are at a disadvantage, who were already, we've already identified them as the students in the gap. These are the students that for the most, your English language learners who have, who struggle learning. They need to negotiate the meaning. So those are the students who, and our special ed students. These are the students who will probably benefit the most. And we need to think about and perhaps engage in a focus group with the students themselves to see and gain insight as to how this mode of learning is working for them as we, as we think about the virtual and all, or 100% virtual or a hybrid.
Thank you. No other comments, I'm going to adjourn the meeting now.
All right. Thank you.
So much for the presentation. I would like to thank each and every single great leader in our team for your time today. And thank you board for the time.
Is there a motion to adjourn or no?
Okay.
Do we motion to adjourn, I don't even remember?
No, we have not. So I will say motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is that second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Which I don't think so. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Stay safe.
Stay safe.